Good evening, everyone. This meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 8th, 2018, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right and your left, and to the back of the room. The City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. McTiernan.
Here.
Ms. Ogden.
Here.
President Naidoo.
Here. Okay. I'd like to now call upon the eighth graders who are in our audience to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, guys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the closed-session appointments meeting of November 12th, 2018, as well as the regular and closed-session meetings of November 19th, 2018?
It's moved.
Second. That was simultaneous. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Great, okay. Moving on to reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for being here. I especially want to welcome the eighth graders who are here. I wasn't able to attend the Public Policy Convention this year, but it's always a great treat, so I'm very glad you're bringing it to us. First of all, it was really wonderful to see so many people of all ages come together earlier this evening at the Interfaith Menorah Lighting. Our community took a stand against hate to promote tolerance and inclusion. Council and I encourage each of you to continue this ongoing discussion with your families and your friends and neighbors about the importance of eliminating bias and hate wherever it exists in our community. The Summit Police Department is participating in Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over, a year-end statewide crackdown on impaired driving that will take place from December 7th, that's Friday, through January 1st, 2019. The goal of the New Jersey State Program is to encourage law enforcement agencies to raise public awareness about the dangers of alcohol-impaired driving through a combination of highly visible enforcement backed up by targeted media activities. Please drink responsibly and join us in making Summit roadways free of impaired drivers. This holiday season, and please enjoy Summit with free parking in select locations each Saturday until Christmas. On Saturdays, December 1st, 8:15 and 22, there are no fees for on-street parking at 90-minute spaces or in the long-term parking lots, that's Elm Street, Middle School, and Chestnut Street lots, and also the Broad Street Garage. Fees are required after the first hour in the DeForest Park and Shop lots, in the library and the Bank Street lots, and on the first floor of the Tier Garage. And also keep in mind that every Saturday throughout the year, the upper levels of the Tier Garage and the Broad Street Lot Garage and the CVS Lot are free on Saturdays. So I hope you shop downtown, shop local, shop in Summit, and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The City Administrator, Michael?
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, everyone. 'Tis the season, the Summit PBA Local 55 and the FMBA 54 are asking the community to support Summit's annual Toys for Tots drive sponsored by the U.S. Marine Corps Reserve. The program runs from November 15th to December 14th. Around 10:00 a.m. it will probably be the cutoff time. Please go to thecityofsummit.org website for toy donation drop-off locations. A public workshop meeting for the proposed Parkline project will take place on this Thursday, December 6th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad located at 1,000 Summit Avenue. There will be a presentation on plans for the project and an opportunity for questions. All interested citizens are invited to attend. The last day for curbside leaf collection is this Friday, December 7th. All major construction on Hobart Avenue has been completed. When weather permits, the final striping and signs will be installed. And additionally, the pedestrian activated beacon has been installed at the intersection of Aubrey Street and Morris Avenue. Please join the Department of Community Programs for free ice skating this Sunday, December 9th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Elm Street Parking Lot behind the Village Green. In addition to ice skating, there will be bonfires, marshmallows, cookie decorating, music, entertainment, and pictures with Santa. And lastly, city offices will be open, this is Friday, December 14th, open at 10:30 a.m. following the annual holiday breakfast for staff. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And for my Council President's report, I'd actually like to make a statement on behalf of all of Common Council as well as the mayor. And I'm going to read it out. "The recent discovery of Nazi swastikas and reports of offensive speech in the middle and high school compel us, as your elected representatives, to speak through one voice about the values of this community. We recognize the discovery of such hate symbols may cause fear, concern, and anger within our community. We unequivocally and without hesitation or reservation condemn these hate symbols, the ideologies that they represent, and the actions of the individuals involved. We recognize that diversity, compassion, and empathy for others, and the understanding of each other's cultural and religious backgrounds are strengths to be celebrated. We believe that having frank, open discussion and education about the Holocaust and the stories of other historically oppressed peoples is necessary in the schools, community places, and at home so that those who are misinformed or uninformed can learn. We recognize, however, that some may have malicious intent, are willing to cause harm, and when they do, we expect that those who are responsible will be held accountable. We recognize that events such as these may have occurred in the past, but we will endeavor to ensure that they will not occur in the future. Finally, we ask everyone to recognize that despite all of our differences, when we come together, we can accomplish great things. We will not be defined by what others do. We will be defined by our own actions. And through these actions, we must demonstrate that hate has no home here." Okay. Thank you. Now with that, in turn, to something much more pleasant. We're going to have our eighth graders, who are members of the public policy presentations, which I did attend, and I saw for hours the different presentations, and they were actually incredible. So this is just a sampling of the presentations that were available for folks to see. We have the principal from Lawton C. Johnson Middle School here, Donna Gallo, and we welcome her to council here tonight. And we also have the teachers, Teresa Martin and Lori McCormick, here tonight. So I think we'll have the teachers come up, introduce the kids, and then the kids will come up and give their presentations. Please come on up.
Okay, so yes, I am Lori McCormick. I'm here with Teresa Martin, and we are two of the four social studies teachers for eighth grade at Lawton C. Johnson. The other two teachers are Gina Tarabacia and Mr. Dan Miller. So to begin with, thank you so much, Mayor and President Naidoo, for having us here, and the rest of the Common Council and City Administrator. Our students are really excited to present their projects to you, as they worked really hard on these. So just to begin with quickly, to give you a brief overview of the project and our course. Our course is called "We the Students," and it has a very big hand in civic engagement. And in order to begin the year off, we do a public policy project where we begin by learning all about local government. We learn all about you, all about your role. We even had a who's who she this year, where they had to learn all of your names and put your names to their faces. So, and once we learn about local government, learn what your role is, and learn how to be an active citizens. We then encourage our students to become active citizens. And in doing so, we ask them to identify a problem in Summit or an area that they feel could be improved. They took at that problem, and they survey people in Summit to determine if it's not just them, but the community as a whole that feels that there is a need in this area. Once they realize that there is a need, they move forward to do research. They research the problem, they research other towns, not only New Jersey, but also in the United States, to see how they've dealt with that problem. And then they come up with an action plan, how to fix the problem. And they even look into budgets and the money it would take to fix these problems. So tonight, you are going to hear from four of our groups in the eighth grade. The topics you will hear about, the first one is going to be about plastic bags in Summit and deterring people from using them. The second topic you are going to hear tonight is about Summit Bike Rental Program, kind of like a city bike system. The third topic you're going to hear about is snow removal and improving the efficiency of that. And then the last topic you're going to hear about is maintenance of parks and our sporting fields here in Summit. So, without further ado, our first group that is going to be presenting to the council tonight are the Plastic Bags in Summit, with the group that's trying to deter use of plastic bags in Summit. We have Ravi Naidoo, Zachary Siegel, and Bennett Harvey. So come on over. You can stand right here. You can put it, actually, if you want to put it on the table, maybe?
I, that's okay. There you go. Hop on the chair. I don't know. We will. Set this off. Hello, I am Bennett Harvey.
I'm Zachary Siegel.
I'm Ravi Naidoo.
Hello. Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak at this meeting. My name is Bennett Harvey. My associates, Ravi Naidoo, Zachary Siegel, and I have come before you today to explain our proposed policy to help restrict plastic bag pollution. Summit, like many other cities, is currently facing the environmental effects of plastic bags. In case you are unaware, 94% of marine animals have plastic in their stomachs. Plastic takes thousands of years to decompose, affects more than 800 animal species, and only 7% of plastic bags are actually recycled worldwide.
Plastic bags do not just affect animals, however. Chemicals such as bisphenol A can enter, leach from plastic bags into the soil. When the foods grown in said soil are consumed, toxins can enter the brain, trigger cellular reactions, and/or cause hormonal changes.
To prove our point, we surveyed a number of Summit's citizens. The overwhelming majority stated that plastic bag usage is an issue that needs to be addressed. Almost everyone surveyed stated that this issue affected almost all of the population. Finally, almost everybody uses plastic bags at least once every few days.
We have created a five-step action plan proposal to present to you. Stage one, we shall run an education campaign to make it clear to the public that plastic bags are irreparably hurting the environment. Stage two, introduce and pass an ordinance requiring local businesses to display a score given by the Environmental Commission and/or the Summit Conservancy that shows how many plastic bags they use.
Stage three, introduce the plastic bag user fee and explain it to the public, and make it clear that money generated would go to buying reusable bags. Stage four, pass the ordinance. Stage five, design reusable bags to promote local businesses. The heart and soul of our plan is, of course, the plastic bag user fee. The official text is not permanent, but our proposal is. For every plastic bag that a person takes from a local business, they will be required to pay a usage fee of 15 cents. This fee will be collected by the business and delivered to the city every January 1st. As we mentioned in our plan, the proceeds from this user fee would go to buying reusable bags for every household in Summit designed to promote local businesses. I lived in Dublin for three years, where a 22-cent user fee was in place on every plastic bag. I saw the effectiveness of this fee firsthand, and I rarely saw anyone use a plastic bag.
a Summit Bike Rental Program.
Hello, my name's Inez Lopez-Silvero.
And I'm Elizabeth Pushkar, and we are eighth-grade students at LCJ SMS.
It's not, it's, I'm too short.
Our idea to help Summit is to put bike rental stations all around town.
It's not just Ireland. Chicago saw a 42% drop in plastic bag usage after a user fee was implemented, and Montgomery
We can all agree that traffic is a big problem in Summit. Because of the cars stuck on the road, the vehicles release gas which creates pollution.
County in Maryland saw a 72% decrease in plastic bags found at stream sites after
64% of population wake up and go to work in the morning.
a user fee was implemented.
If everyone wakes up at the same time, the roads will be congested with vehicles.
All across the U.S., people are making real change when it comes to the environment.
By placing bike docks all over Summit, this will cut back on gas emissions.
Summit must join them and take a stand. We cannot sit idly by while the environment is annihilated before our very eyes.
We will place these docks at Tatlock Field, Memorial Field, the train station, the YMCA,
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
7-Eleven, Franklin Field, Lincoln Field, and Jefferson Field. The following information that we found from George Washington University's bike-sharing program is modified to fit Summit's demographics and the needs that we have. Installing these eight docks, installing these eight bike rental stations would cost $292,307, and the yearly maintenance cost would be $86,000. If 10% of people in Summit enroll in yearly memberships, which is around $60, Summit will collect $132,000 a year in revenue. If yearly maintenance cost is only $86,000, then Summit would make $46,000, and this money could go to installing even more bike stations.
Our annual members would cost $30 to $95. The first 30 to 60 minutes for every ride would be free. Then it'd be a $2 to $4 for each additional 30-minute segment. For one-day pass would equal $5 to $10. One-week pass would cost $10 to $25, and one-month pass would cost $15 to $40. A gold membership would cost $40, so the first 60 minutes of a ride is free. Then there would be a dollar for each additional 30-minute segment. A silver membership would cost $25, so the first 30 minutes of the ride are free. Then there'd be a dollar for each additional 30-minute segment. So for the casual riders, be a dollar per 30 minutes.
We would like to thank you for listening to our idea and like for you guys to help us with our idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have Gabriel Malik and Grady Borst to present to you on snow removal.
My name is Gabriel Malik.
And my name is Grady Borst.
And we are students at LCJ SMS currently. We came up with this idea of snow removal efficiency when we thought of last winter, especially between February and March. Summit was hit, in New Jersey, but Summit primarily, was hit by four coastal storms in a time span of four weeks. And many of you probably remember this, but Summit was down for a while. There was no school for three to four days, and the town was moving very slowly. It took a while to get back up. And we felt that this was an issue that needed to be, that it was very prominent and that it needed to be solved and addressed. And yet again, it was shown a few weeks ago where we were hit by the flash snowstorm, and schools weren't canceled, and it took hours for people to get home. And in this issue, we found three main problems that needed to be addressed. One, the streets weren't being plowed fast enough. Two, when the streets were being plowed, lots of snow was being pushed back into people's driveways, just creating work for the citizens. And three, not all of the streets were being plowed. We did a survey, several people agreed with this. More than 90% of the survey said that this issue needed to be addressed. So in order to come up with ideas to fix this problem, we came up with an action plan.
All right. So we decided to get, well, obviously, get the three solutions to the problem using our action plan. So we wanted to write two letters, one to David Naidoo, the council president, and one to Michael Rogers, the city administrator. We also made a petition in our school, and like 15 out of 18 people agreed with our idea of, to like just improve it. And we just want to like put a banner, if you know like when they have the, like, what's it called?
Banners for the market.
Yeah, the market banners. We could put one of those up. If you look on the board at the bottom of the action plan, we could put one of those up like hanging, and people could see it, and it could get people's attention, and it could like raise awareness for it, and people could maybe donate money to help if they really want to. Yep. Oh, yeah. So, the solution, so we want to train, we have to make sure we train the people, so we need to make sure they learn how to like not put the snow in the driveways. We want to get more snowplows. Well, there are six districts, and each district has two snowplows. We want to add one to each district to have 18 snowplows in all. And we need to, so we think that's a good idea, and we think that if you could improvise the routes, maybe to make it a bit faster to get all the roads done.
In the 2017 municipal goals and objectives, in the strategic objective section, it says that identify areas for improvement throughout the city to enhance transportation and public safety. We feel like this definitely is a public safety issue, considering the fact that cars will be slipping, it can cause accidents, and people could be hurt in the process. In addition to this, the number of snowplows that we feel is needed is an additional six in total. Each snowplow costs approximately $45,000 to $50,000. And if we wanted to get six over the next five years, which would be including with the 2017 through 2022 capital budget, we would end up doubling the $285,000 current situation. And if we doubled that to approximately $600,000 over the next five years, we would be able to pay for it with the approximated surplus of this year, which is around $6.9 million, making this plan not only needed, but it's also possible.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And last but not least, we have Dita Mohammadi and Lina Sharma, and they're going to be talking to you about park and sporting field maintenance.
Hi, my name is Lina Sharma.
I'm Dita Mohammadi.
And one of the main problems we've been seeing in Summit is our parks. Even though they're really pretty and all, but there's a lot of litter and trash, and we focus mainly on cigarettes and smoking. The reason it's so important is because not only does it litter and create more trash, second-hand smoke is also very dangerous to all our community. We took a survey, and as you can see at the bottom, there are a bunch of people agree that this problem really needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and our policy proposal really focuses on the health and safety of our community as a whole. And our policy proposal also includes, if you can see on section four, it's really small, I don't know how you're going to see it, but it says it. If you, after 9:30 p.m., the parks will be monitored and will be closed, and if you pursue your smoking after 9:30 p.m., you will have a $150 fine, and any time after that, you will have $350, just to enforce this proposal. And also, we wrote a letter to Beth Little, just really stating that since she really covers the Parks and Recreation Areas, she would really help us, and if she approved it, that would be great.
Yeah. So not only are we going to be writing letters and trying to gain support, we also want to add more trash cans around, so if people do have litter and stuff, they can easily dispose of it. And not only that, we also want more maintenance workers working at the parks, so not only will they like constantly be clean, like, yeah.
We, yes, just like you mentioned, like Lina mentioned, we will be needing a little bit of help. Although it's not revenue-neutral, it's still going to cost a little bit of money for garbage cans and signs that we are going to say, just like the young ones at play. We actually did a little bit of research, and we realized that in 2017, your municipal goals and objectives, one of them was to maintain and upgrade critical city assets and infrastructure and promote safety. And that really includes, as it says, conduct routine scheduled preventive maintenance, and on and on. It says Parks and Recreation Areas, and also athletic fields. And we think then, since this has been an issue that you guys have brought up before in the past, we think that this is still a problem in Summit, and it should be addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me just say, as I said, this was a sampling of all the different types of public policy ideas. And why we wanted to have, you know, at least a sample brought in is because these are the folks that are going to inherit this town, right? And so your hearing from folks will become the future residents. They are the residents, they'll become the future taxpayers of this town, and they're telling us the direction they want to see things go. And these are the issues that are important to them, and then therefore they're the issues that are important to us. Because as we do public policy, public policy is never done for one year or six months. It is done for five, 10, 15 years down the road. We have to try to figure out how we achieve those goals that people are laying out, and it doesn't matter the age of the person that's speaking, it's the policy idea that matters. There are clear policy ideas here. So thank you all for coming in, really appreciate it. I'm going to give a minute break, although I will say the next presentation by the Chair of the Recycling Advisory Committee is, will probably touch on some point.
They covered it.
They covered it. Sorry, Karen. But I'll give a minute break in case parents or kids want to leave, as well as our educators. But thank you again very much. Okay, we'll take a minute break, guys. All right, we're back in session, and we're continuing on with our presentations. And as I said, the next presentation is by the Chair of the Recycling Advisory Committee, Karen Rehoffer. Karen, come on.
That really was a tough, this will be a tough act to follow. You joked, but. Good evening. I'm Karen Rehoffer, and I chair our Recycling Advisory Committee. As an initial point, I want to thank certain people who helped me as I assumed this role: Marjorie Fox, Paul Casscase, and Amy Cairns. I also want to thank the volunteers on the committee for their time and contributions. The objective of the Recycling Advisory Committee is to assist the city in improving its recycling efforts, and we continuously aim to educate residents and businesses about reducing, reusing, and recycling in three basic ways. First, we have several flyers available on the city's website to guide residents and businesses regarding recycling practices and programs. Second, we maintain an active
Let me just say, as I said, this was a sampling of all the different types of public policy ideas. And why we wanted to have, you know, at least a sample brought in is because these are the folks that are going to inherit this town, right? And so your hearing from folks will become the future residents. They are the residents, they'll become the future taxpayers of this town, and they're telling us the direction they want to see things go. And these are the issues that are important to them and then therefore they're the issues that are important to us. Because as we do public policy, public policy is never done for one year or six months. It is done for five, 10, 15 years down the road. We have to try to figure out how we achieve those goals that people are laying out. And it doesn't matter the age of the person that's speaking, it's the policy idea that matters. They're clear policy ideas here. So thank you all for coming in. Really appreciate it. I'm going to give a minute break, although I will say the next presentation by the chair of the recycling advisory committee is, will probably touch on some point.
They covered it.
They covered it. Sorry, Karen. But I'll give a minute break in case parents or kids want to leave or, as well as our educators. But thank you again very much. Okay, we'll take a minute break, guys. All right, we'll be, we're back in session and we're continuing on with our presentations. And as I said, the next presentation is by the chair of the recycling advisory committee, Karen Rehoffer. Karen, come on.
That really was a tough, this will be a tough act to follow. You joked, but. Good evening. I'm Karen Rehoffer and I chair our recycling advisory committee. As an initial point, I want to thank certain people who helped me as I assumed this role. Marjorie Fox, Paul Casscase, and Amy Cairns. I also want to thank the volunteers on the committee for their time and contributions. The objective of the recycling advisory committee is to assist the city in improving its recycling efforts. And we continuously aim to educate residents and businesses about reducing, reusing, and recycling in three basic ways. First, we have several flyers available on the city's website to guide residents and businesses regarding recycling practices and programs. Second, we maintain an active Facebook page with regular postings of informative articles. And may I suggest for everyone listening, please consider joining our Facebook group if you haven't already. Lastly, we welcome all feedback, comments, complaints, suggestions, and can be reached by email at recyclesummit@gmail.com. My presentation tonight will briefly describe some recent accomplishments of the committee and then we'll offer some thoughts to consider going forward. This year, we helped prepare grant applications for big belly bins for Glen Side Fields and dual compartment recycling bins for all of our public schools. We hosted a guest speaker who spoke about composting and recycling systems. And we hosted an information table at Community Night that primarily featured alternatives to single use items. We also distributed flyers to Summit sports teams, encouraging them to properly dispose of recyclables, to bring reusable bottles, and to leave the fields clean, which the presentation about cleaning the fields helped support as well. We met with representatives from Atlantic Healthcare at Overlook Hospital for a tour to learn about their sustainability efforts. And we continue to maintain that relationship. With the help of DCS in October, we expanded our tennis ball collection program from Memorial Fields and the Summit Tennis Club to Tatlock's tennis courts. This is really neat, if you haven't seen it or you're not familiar with the program. The used balls are shipped to an organization, Recycle Balls, and the rubber is ground into a crumb rubber product, which is incorporated into green products, including tennis court surfaces. Lastly, and again with the help of DCS, in October, we implemented a plastic film collection program at the transfer station. This effort is part of a program run by a company, Trex, and the collected material is used to make Trex products. The collection bin is a welcome addition to our recycling efforts. So looking ahead, one objective for the committee in the year ahead is to get a better handle on recycling in our public schools. Our goal being to help with any improvements and to facilitate district-wide programs. We're pleased that we recently identified a candidate who has applied to be our new education representative. Now, on a broader scale, many of us are aware of the shift that has occurred over the past year in the recycling market. With China and other countries banning imports of certain recyclables, the potential exists for limited markets and collapsing prices. It's status quo for now, but if there's a change in what our haulers will accept, the committee will be there to help educate residents and businesses. But the current climate in the recycling market heightens our awareness about the need to change the composition of both our waste stream and our recycling stream. Which brings me to the two items I think the committee should primarily focus on in 2019. That's food composting and single use plastics. According to the EPA, food waste comprises about 22% of the waste stream. One of the items in the action plan for a sustainable summit from a decade ago was to consider developments by the city of a food composting program. And one of the actions and strategies identified in the 2016 master plan was considering the addition of a closed vessel composting system at the transfer station. The committee would like to explore how we can help advance this longstanding goal, particularly given the current climate in the recycling market. I personally think it would be the single most impactful improvement we can make to our recycling practices. Curbside composting is an admirable long-term goal, but practically speaking, the related logistical and financial aspects are a challenge. But I want to remind everyone that our recycling program started many years back as a voluntary drop-off program. I would offer that same model for a food composting program if we had a closed composting vessel. A pilot drop-off program could include local restaurants, school cafeterias, and a group of interested residents. Over the past six months, the committee researched composting vessels for food waste. Working with DCS, we attended demonstrations for two different vessels, and we engaged in discussions with one group that has an underutilized composting vessel at its location. If supported by DCS, the mayor, and council, the recycling advisory committee would like to play a role in seeking funding for a closed composting vessel through grants, through donations, however long that would take to accomplish. I think it would be an important step as part of a concrete plan to eventually bring food composting to Summit. The second item is single use plastics. And those three kids are going to be on the committee in a couple of years. I think next year. As many of us are aware, there is proposed legislation in New Jersey that would impose the strongest statewide ban on plastic grocery store bags, styrofoam phone, food containers, and plastic straws. While that proposed legislation is running its course, Summit launched its Skip the Straw campaign, which was organized by the recycling advisory committee, the Environmental Commission, and Green Summit with the support of DCS. Summit's program is a voluntary program and it aims to reduce plastic waste through education and outreach. Our volunteers are currently contacting every business that offers straws, inviting them to participate. Businesses are being asked to serve straws by request only or to switch to an alternative to plastic straws. Customers are encouraged to order drinks without a straw. People with disabilities or injuries need to use straws, and some just prefer it. But in large part, the straw is the embodiment of needless waste. This campaign encourages a change in habits and a shift in thinking away from a disposable consumer culture. The long-term goal is to introduce additional phases of a broader single use plastic reduction campaign, moving to passing on the plastic bags and utensils, rethinking packaging and to-go containers, and other related initiatives. We also will consider how to publicize phases of the campaign in our schools to reach our students. Ultimately, legislation in New Jersey will inform how we approach single use plastics, but in the meantime, Summit has joined the movement through a voluntary and educational campaign. In closing, the recycling advisory committee recognizes that there is quite a bit of work to be done, and we strive to contribute in a meaningful way to help with our city's recycling efforts. We thank you for entrusting us with this important work.
Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you for the very informative report. And let me just say, I think from my perspective, you hit the nail right on the head, because sometimes people think that these issues are, well, those people who like green and, but it is a green issue, and that's the green of money. And, and because these recycling efforts go directly to the bottom line of this city. We pay money for tipping fees. So every time people throw things out, we go ahead and take not only what is being thrown out, but we're taking money out of our community and being sent somewhere else. To the extent we can reduce how much material goes out, whether it's through recycling because we have less plastic bags being used, because of this great idea with the tennis balls, I think that's wonderful because it's both litter as well as having stuff being thrown out, has a direct impact on the financial status of this city. It has a direct impact on taxpayers. So it's commendable for what you guys are doing. And I, personally, I'm in favor of both of the things that you outlined tonight. With that, I'll open up to other council members. If they have questions or comments. Mary.
I have a question. I'm just a little surprised. We don't have closed composting vessels at any of our schools? Because that seems like a natural place to do that and then turn that into fertilizer for the grounds. But we don't have that at any of our schools?
We don't?
Okay.
We did at one time.
We did?
We didn't have a vessel. We had a program.
No, we had a program, not a vessel.
Okay.
A vessel actually requires labor on someone's part.
Right.
There are small ones that the gardening club has, but they're just used for their gardens if kids do.
Okay.
The worm composting systems, there are smaller ones. And we could look into sharing information about those systems for the schools. Matt.
Are there any nearby municipalities or organizations that have one of these large and vessel, composting vessels that we could look at?
Yes, and we have.
Where, where are they?
UCVT has one.
UC?
The VOTEC schools.
Oh, okay.
They have one, and that's the underutilized one.
So they have one? Okay.
Keene University is the other one. And we're, Merck, we just went to that, that site in.
And Merck? Do you know about how much, we would need one, a big one, right? And how, about how much would it cost?
That's the difficulty, that's the difficulty. What, you know, which size do we get or will it be, you know, an underutilized one is not, is not helpful. Will we outgrow it? I, I feel like we have to do a little bit of research, but we have to start somewhere.
Right.
I feel like that can't hold us back.
Yeah, no, no, I'm excited about this idea. It's a very, what I love about your presentation, you give us a very specific plan that we could work towards, which a lot of times, you know, green issues feel so overwhelming, you don't know what to do.
They are.
But that's very specific, and I like that. And we should, we could visit some of these and do one. It seems like getting a smaller one would be better. We could always have another one after that.
And I would take that on. I would take that on, however long it takes, I would take on having the committee work on the fundraising, because that is what I think is holding us back. And instead of saying, you know, throw it into the budget, we can't, we can't go there. I will take this on to.
Well, we could also see that, I mean, obviously, there would be some savings, as council president Naidu alluded to, because we have a reduction in tipping fees if we were composting it. So what that reduction is, how much that is, and how many years we could amortize it. Smart.
Steve.
I guess following up on, on the food composting, has that, the joint meeting composting station, has that advanced any further? Or have we talked any further with that? Or is that?
Very nice presentation. Through you, council president, not that I know of. I haven't, I haven't reached out to them to see how, how far they are into it and who they're accepting at this time, the joint meeting.
I know we had that conference call with them.
Right.
And it seemed to be throwing an awful lot of cost at us transporting it down, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. And that was one of the issues. So the recycling advisory committee has done a lot in the last year at looking at alternative composting techniques. So we've, we've identified a vessel and owning our own vessel as being probably the best fit. So a couple of years ago, the school system did have a program that the recycling advisory committee did initiate. That program then, the site that they were delivering the food waste to actually closed down. So we think it would be best not to have to rely on any other type of techniques or agreements and to look at a vessel. There are a number of private sector businesses that do have them. One of the, we, what we've been struggling with is to size the vessel. So I think what, and what we've talked about is actually to actually conduct a waste audit in Summit to see how much material, compostable material, we would be able to take out of the waste stream, identify what that would cost to continue to tip it the way we are. And it'll identify the size of the unit we would need and the funding we would need and the savings by composting. And as you know, there's always an end product to composting as well, like our leaves. So you would not only benefit by composting and saving some money, but also you would be able to give that compost back to our community to use in their gardens. So, and that's what Kane University is doing and Union County Tech is actually taking that material that they're composting and putting it back into their gardens there.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Oh, Marjorie.
Karen, I just wanted to say thank you. I'm so excited that you've taken this committee on and run with it and come up with new initiatives. It's really, you guys have done a great job, and I look forward to hearing what you guys come up with on composting. Thank you.
Karen, let me ask you a question. On the Skip the Straw campaign, what was the, what has been the reaction?
It's fantastic.
Okay.
It's fantastic. It's, it's, I, everyone is interested at some level. And, and people are speaking with their suppliers, people are ready to make the change. What I am getting, when, when we do meet with businesses, we get a lot of feedback. So there will be a, a follow-up in terms of, of the, the concerns that the businesses have, which is, which is a fantastic byproduct of this campaign. So, but back. Pardon?
Parking. Is parking their issue?
No. No, it's, you know, for example, many businesses don't know that they can get the permit to use the transfer station to drop off their, their co-mingle. They don't know that. And, you know, this is, this was news. So even sharing that, some, some exchange, and just knowing that there's, there's now an open channel of communication about things that they have concerns about. And then we can go back to those same contacts to talk about the next phase of the campaign. But to your question, it's very, it's favorable response. We really so far have not, I mean, we've got dozens more that we're, we're still reaching out to, but it's, it's been favorable. And some have already implemented it or just say, okay, we'll stop.
And, and do you have like, are you planning, I'm sorry, can't remember the campaign, is there going to be posters of things like that that identify saying in front of stores, you know, Skip the Straw?
We're, we're soliciting feedback as to what material, what campaign material they, they would like to receive. Table tents are not as, as popular as you might think because.
I'm sorry, what, table what?
Table tents, you see it on table, it's next to the salt and pepper, and they put a little.
Oh, right.
A little stand-up table tent with some information. That's not as helpful as you would think it would be because it clutters their table. It's another thing for them. Some may just stop, maybe a small poster or even something on their website, something to show that they're participating. But overall, it's been very favorable.
Great.
Oh, Matt.
I'm sorry, I have a technical question to follow up. The, like, okay, Starbucks came up with that new lid that you can drink out of lids that doesn't have a straw, but the lid, of course, is made out of plastic. Is that still, is that better somehow than the straw?
There's a lot of discussion about that.
Oh.
It's recyclable. So the straw isn't recyclable for a few reasons. It's a problem because it's, because of its shape and size. It, it falls, it literally falls through the cracks, it jams machines. It might be made out of resin number five, which not everyone accepts. So there are a series of problems. It blows away, it gets into the sewage system, it gets right into the waterways, into marine life, and so forth. So the straw itself is, is unique in terms of its lightweight nature and, and how it, it's a problem for recycling machinery.
Okay.
So the cap, it might be a little bit more plastic, but it's.
It's better.
It might be easier to recycle. And I think our committee needs to be renamed, reduce, reuse, recycling, but that's too many words.
The three Rs.
Because we really need to focus on reducing and reusing. We're excellent at recycling and we've missed the mark. And it's not we, it's, it's generally, you know, the, society has. We've missed the mark. We have to reduce.
Let, let me just open up to the public in case somebody has a specific question. Anybody in the public? Hey, very good. Hey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Karen. And thank you to your committee, by the way.
Yeah.
All the members of it. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. We are now at the section of the agenda for those following for public comments. So those members of the public who would like to speak about something that is not a topic of tonight's agenda, please come up and state your name and where you live and happy to hear from you. Anyone going once, going twice? Oh, wait.
Here we go.
It is not sold.
Hi, I'm Melissa Spur. I live in Summit on Woodland Ave. I was curious actually about, I've been reading a lot about resiliency in terms of, there's many federal and other nonprofit kind of grants available to cities now doing resiliency plans. Part of this goes to, you know, the electric grid in particular and storm preparations. I was wondering if Summit has applied for any such grants or is doing any kind of resiliency planning with regards to the storms we've been seeing?
I'll open it up for anybody here from the DAS Michael, anybody that would know and answer Ms. Spur's question.
I don't think there's any, been any specific, I think of microgrid as a resiliency initiative that has been discussed. There's been, I think, there was a resident that came. Huge undertaking, certainly. We rely upon our electrical grid system as much as we can. It's not necessarily the purview of the municipality to control that. I'm just trying to think of some other mitigation efforts, nothing during the last few years.
Other than generators that we received funding for.
Right.
For a couple of public buildings, but nothing as large as.
Like a community, a citywide.
Just so, for those in, who are listening to us on television and cannot hear the comment by the director of the Department of Community Services, he, he mentioned the fact that we got, I guess, grants or monies associated with generators for specific buildings. I, I think even the community center, we increased the size of the generator there in order to make that a building that could be used in, in the event of an emergency, right, Paul? Is that something, you want to come up?
Yes, council president. So we did receive funding for the community center's generator and the public works facility. But I'd be happy to look into any other funding that's available through our grant writer regarding citywide type grants that are available for, for electric, yeah.
And Melissa, since you're, you're a member of the green team, right? And so if you guys know of something, obviously, share the information with.
You know, I, I had seen, yeah, I had seen a number of things in, in the news or, you know, just. You know, I, I had seen, yeah, I had seen a number of things in, in the news or, you know, just my readings, but I wasn't sure, it's, they are all very large undertakings. They're really citywide efforts that are comprehensive and holistic. It's not just solving one problem, it's not just, you know, undergrounding wires or building some solar panels. It's very, it's like a thorough, you know, storm preparation kind of thing. So I wasn't sure what the proper department or departments would be for that.
In general services, we've had many presentations on the microgrid and how we're in beginning stages of figuring out how Summit can utilize this technology and what we can do to- but it is a huge undertaking, but we are in discussions, we are hearing presentations, we are seeing what's viable for Summit. But that's, we're just really in beginning stages of that. But, so I think that once we figure out what we as a city are actually able to do, then we go for the grants and see what, how we can use those grants to move it forward. Yeah, but we are in discussion.
Yeah, and, and of course, if there's a technology-related stuff, we do have a technology advisory committee. So they would be a good avenue that if you see something that you think, you know, has a technological bent about whether it's, I guess, conduits and wiring and something like that, then they may be the avenue to go to, to give that suggestion and as the lighting goes down here as we speak itself. And I know, General Services, Mary and Beth have been involved, I'll let her speak, but I know they've been involved also with solar paneling. Beth, do you want to?
I was just going to say that, also in General Services, we've had some presentations and quite a bit of research done by, primarily by Rita McNanny about doing solar canaping, canopies above some of the parking lots and parking garages and increasing the solar capacity and looking into putting solar panels on top of some of the municipal buildings or school buildings. So we've been looking into that as well. So I don't think we're at the point of doing a kind of comprehensive citywide plan, but we've definitely been proactive about researching different technologies and different options and different directions the city might want to pursue and go into, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question, a comment, anything? Okay, great. With that, I'll close the public comment section. We have one ordinance for hearing tonight. It's a finance and personnel, it's eighteen dash thirty-one seventy-eight. Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance for hearing?
Bond ordinance appropriating one million fifty thousand dollars in authorizing the issuance of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars in bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. As we discussed at the last meeting, this is an amendment to the last year's capital plan and it's to appropriate monies for two different projects. One is the resurfacing of the pool and the community pool and one is for the design documents for the new firehouse. As I discussed previously, but it bears repeating, we don't take any amendments to the capital plan lightly. We do a very comprehensive budget process in the spring, which continues from, really from now through the spring process where we really look hard at this, the money that the city has put aside for capital projects and make very difficult decisions about what monies are going to be spent. And so therefore, doing an amendment to the capital plan is not something that we, we do lightly or that we do as a matter of course. In this instance, we feel it's appropriate to bring this ordinance forward for hearing. This is for two projects that the expenses were not known at the time that we did the capital budget process, but that if we wait and put it into the capital budget for, for next year, there will be consequences to that decision as well. So the pool resurfacing is to make sure that the pool is in good shape to open up for the summer season. We thought that the surface of the pool would be, could last for one more year and due to a number of factors, one, that the storms last year damaged the cover that goes over the pool during the winter, so the pool service took more damage over the winter and because of the storms that happened when they drained the pool at the end of the summer, they found that the pool service had disintegrated to a degree that we hadn't expected and that it really needs to be resurfaced at this time. If we wait until the next budget process, the pool could not be, pool project could not be completed before the summer season and obviously, that would be a great detriment to allow the people in Summit. On the fire project, firehouse project, it's become clear through the Broad Street redevelopment project that we've been pursuing that we really need to go forward and look at moving the firehouse to a new site and that doing the design documents will give us a much better idea of how to go forward with that and to move that plan forward. And again, waiting till the next budget process to put that money in the budget would really delay both the firehouse project and the Broad Street redevelopment project. And we feel like that that should go forward at this time, too. So with that, I would like to move this ordinance for hearing.
Do you want to answer? Thank you. Comments or questions from members of council? This is a public hearing, so, oh, sorry, oh, Mike.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, no, I, I get that things do come up and it sounds like, Councilwoman Little has explained it very, very well. I would, the only thing I would say is, I would hope as we are now in the process of looking at our capital plans, I know it's kind of already begun for next year, that we think about these two items while they're not technically part of, will be a part of the 2019 capital plan. We just passed them. So I think rather than this looking at as a standalone, because we, we do want to look at our finances holistically, that this should be thought of almost as a 2019 project, even though it's not going to fall into that column. So when we're thinking about what we're spending, what our finances look going forward, how we look at everything year to year, and I know Finance, a couple of years ago, put together a very comprehensive program or plan about how to issue debt. And I think that we should make sure that we're thinking about this because I know when, once we do it, and it always says, oh, we already did that, let's not worry about it, let's, let's look forward. But I, I think it would be important that we make sure that we do include this when we're thinking about 2019.
Just respond briefly, that the Finance Committee has already discussed doing just that, kind of looking at these projects as part of the overall 2019 budget as well and making sure that we take that in consideration. And also, we have been working with the financial advisors to do an overall restructuring of the debt and make sure that we're in good shape moving forward with our overall debt service plan. So those are both been taken under consideration. I don't know if you have anything to add?
Council President, just something I failed to mention during my report. Next Wednesday evening at six-thirty, the city will be holding its preliminary 2019 capital budget presentation. So anybody interested, but yes, think about debt a lot, Councilman McTernan, you know that.
I know what you do.
Yes. I, I agree with Councilman McTernan and Councilwoman Little. I think the way we, and as has, as she said, it's been discussed in the Finance Committee, this is really thought of being really in advance on 2019, instead of thinking of it as an amendment to 2018. We needed to do this and especially, let me just speak for a moment about the fire, fire station. It would have been inadvisable actually last year to go ahead and take on debt for the fire station at that point in time. And the reason being, at least in my opinion, we were going to go ahead and put out an RFQ to see if developers were interested in the Broad Street Redevelopment West area. We would not have known in March or April, when we would have had to have approved the normal course, the capital budget, whether or not there would actually be developers interested in that parcel. But we would have had taken on the debt instead. We now have gone through this year and went out, this is what we know. And I know that many in the council are very familiar, but those of you at home who are listening or here in the audience who are listening and are not familiar, Broad Street West is that area between Maple and Morris on Broad Street. It's about ten acres. Partially, it is sixty percent of it city-owned land, forty percent is privately owned. We had about ten developers interested who put in RFQs, requests for qualifications, that they were qualified. We evaluated them, they came in, they spoke with us. That was done in the summer. Now, in late fall, we had about seven developers come back to us. Some of them had combined with others, so seven different projects, let's say, of people coming back to us and speaking to us about their conceptual ideas that they would like to see or would do if we selected them as developers to work with. Our development team, which is actually going to speak at the next council meeting on the eighteenth, they're going to give us an update of where we are, but they are going to be coming out with a redevelopment plan for the Broad Street area and that should be presented to the public in full in the first quarter of 2019. Every one of those developers that have come with their conceptual plans basically have indicated that they would not envision a fire station of where they are, where it is currently, and we would need to move it. In order for them to move forward with their development and for us to be able to know that we can go ahead and enter into a redevelopment agreement with them that is binding, we have to do the preparatory spade work to get us there. This proposal, and then subsequently, you will see later on tonight, we will vote on the resolution for a contract to get the design and construction documents, is that spade work necessary to move this project forward? So we have done this in a thoughtful manner as a council and I know internally as committees to think through what is the sequence of events that we need to do in order to both signal to the marketplace that we are serious, but also signal to them that we're serious about a timeframe that is, that is not in the very distant future to achieve redevelopment on Broad Street. This is part and parcel of that. Any further questions or comments?
And not forgetting, of course, that we need our fire department to be effective for the safety of our residents and we need our fire department to be updated for the safety of our firefighters, which is also urgent.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, are there any comments, questions from members of the public about this? Hey, going once, going twice. Any further discussion by members of council? Consider this hearing closed. Moving on, ordinances for final consideration, eighteen dash thirty-one seventy-eight. Madam Clerk, would you please read it?
Bond ordinance appropriating one million fifty thousand dollars and authorizing issuance of nine hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. As just discussed in the previous hearing, I would like to move that this ordinance be approved for final consideration.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
The President and I do.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to ordinances for introduction. We have three tonight, two from safety, one from buildings and grounds, starting off with safety, sixty dash eighty-four. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter Seven, Traffic, Section Seven Dash Eleven Through Streets, Stop Intersections and Yield Intersections, Subsection Seven Dash Eleven Point Two, Stop Intersections Designated.
Councilman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. So I move to introduce this ordinance. The first is to put a new, new stop signs at Springfield and Hobart, effectively making that a four-way stop. There's a great deal of justification for this, including a number of crashes over the past year, the major street vehicle volume and the pedestrian safety. The other two places where we want to add stop signs are Cleveland Road and Colt on Cleveland and Westminster and Witridge on Westminster. And both, all, all three of these locations have been examined by the Safety Committee, by the Police Department and by the city admin, city engineer, who all agree that these are necessary. So I move that we introduce this ordinance for approval.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
The President and I do.
Aye.
Moving on, safety, number two, sixty dash eighty-five. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter Seven, Traffic, Section Seven Dash Eight Parking, Subsection Seven Dash Eight Point Seven, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets.
Councilwoman Gould, please.
Thank you, Council President. This originated from a letter from a resident on this street, on Chapel Street. And we, our police department examined the traffic flow and the safety for the residents and the businesses there and determined that it's dangerous because of sightlines and because of driveways to have parking available on the west side of Chapel. And so I move to introduce this ordinance to prohibit parking on the west side of Chapel.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
The President and I do.
Aye.
Okay, Buildings and Grounds, sixty, sixty-six. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
An ordinance amending Chapter Thirty-Five Development Regulations Ordinance, Article Two Affordable Housing Multi-Family Set-Aside, Subsection Thirty-Five Dash Eleven Point One, Quantification of Affordable Housing Obligation for Multi-Family Developers.
Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance amends the current Affordable Housing Multi-Family Set-Aside ordinance in the Development Regulations Ordinance of the City Code. This amendment is proposed pursuant to the amended settlement agreement between the City of Summit and Fair Share Housing Center. The proposed ordinance will require any multi-family development of five or more dwellings within the city to be required to include an affordable housing set-aside obligation. The current ordinance is restricted only to zones in which multi-family developments are currently permitted, whereas the proposed amendment will require multi-family development of five or more dwellings, whether within multi-family zones or with the permission of a city land use board. And if either of those two comes to pass, they will be required to include an affordable housing set-aside obligation. As is the process for amendments to the city's Development Regulations Ordinance, the proposed amendment, as drafted, will be sent to the Summit Planning Board for review at their regular meeting on December seventeenth for validation of its conformance to the city's adopted master plan. I move this ordinance for introduction.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
The President and I do.
Aye.
Okay. All of those ordinances will be heard at the next council meeting on December eighteenth. Moving on to resolutions, the first one is law. Councilman McTernan.
Thank you, Council President. So this resolution, we need it because we need to know when we're meeting next year. Particularly the first meeting, which is our reorganization meeting. So this resolution just lays out for the council and for the public the dates for our various city meetings, including our reorg meeting and other special meetings that sometimes takes place in the fall, like what we just had at our appointment meetings. And with that, I move this resolution. Thank you.
Second. Okay, any discussion by members of council? Any comments, questions, discussion by members of the public? Further discussion?
People should note these dates so they can make sure to get a seat here.
Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, safety. Councilman Gould.
Thank you, Council President. This is the resolution. I move that we authorize this resolution regarding the new firehouse design that Councilman, Councilwoman Little was discussing earlier. And what this is, is specifically, is to authorize an agreement with the architectural firm of LeMay, Erickson and Wilcox to go through two phases of the, of the design for the new fire station. And these two phases specifically are the design, forgive me, I just have to check my notes here to make sure I get it right. The development, the design development phase and the construction documents phase, both of which are critical for us to move forward with the, with the new fire station and with the redevelopment of Broad Street West. So I move that we authorize this resolution.
I second that.
Okay, comments, questions from members of council? Mike?
Thank you, Council President. Through you, but for the chief, just, we, we saw last year a, like a schematic and a design of the firehouse. Is that, are, is it safe to assume that when we do get these design development documents and then the construction doc, is it going to be based upon that design that we saw? I don't know, was it six months ago or, or eight months ago?
Council President, important, yeah. Yes, as you know, we, we've had two studies on a firehouse. The one was a needs assessment, which brought us to the feasibility phase. Now, there's renderings based upon conceptual design that we come up with from other firehouses. A lot of that information came from the public's comments from the Broad Street West. You had a couple of workshops, you kind of visited those, got some ideas what the public wants and incorporated that into a conceptual design. The next phase- The next phase of this is really going to get into nitty-gritties of sealing what the firehouse is going to look like, and more so get into more of the inside of the firehouse, room layouts, construction of buildings, infrastructure needs, engineering, that's really going to get a document ready to go to bid. That's probably what you're going to do, and blueprints, engineering work, all that stuff. When these two phases are done, we'll be ready to go to bid. So during this time period, we'll come back a lot, maybe get more ideas from the public, more different counsel, and really sealing what that building is going to look like. But probably eighty percent of those conceptual documents we had presentation, that's kind of the content that we're looking for.
Thank you. I would just want to add a couple of things. One of the things that folks, if you were to go through this agreement, will notice that one of the elements that we put in here is to have sustainability as part of the type of building that we would want. So they need to take sustainability principles into it. This is, we heard from folks, from the kids and from the eighth grade, issues dealing with the environment and how we're looking at the future are critical. Sustainability is not only, again, similar to recycling, it's not simply, it's a nice green, environmentally good thing to do, but it has monetary savings for the city in the long term if we apply those principles. The other thing I'll note for folks who are following this and may not be all familiar with the different council meetings that we've discussed this, just to remind folks, the idea is to move the fire station to a portion of the non-resident parking that currently exists on Broad Street. So the area between the Tier Garage and Salerno Duane would be the site location. That was determined after another site was considered. That is really the only site along the main corridor that has enough space in order to host the type of fire station that we need. And also to remind folks, our current fire station requires us to get custom-made fire trucks, which costs us more money because it's not designed to the standard size of a fire station. So these are things to consider. Any other, any folks want to make any comments?
Forgive me. Councilman McTiernan, I had noted everything that comes with this next phase, which I know that Chief Evers mentioned, but it's everything down to diagrammatic layouts, elevations, plans, sections, typical construction details, how much materials they need. So it's really, really detailed next step that's going to be done by the architects.
Any comments or questions from members of the public? Lana?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Mayor, evening. Dave Baumgarts of one oh three Maple Street and here in Summit, and just wanted to make just a few comments regarding this particular resolution. What sticks in my mind is for how many years council has been looking at the situation with the firehouse. I mean, constructed in nineteen oh one, we're considering and mourning President, ex-President H.W. Bush's funeral. In nineteen oh one, McKinley was shot. It is just many, many years, and the facility as it is now does not meet national standards. So I think you're doing, I think the city is doing the right thing. The second point I wanted to make is the effort that Chief Evers and Deputy Chief Nelson and firemen have done to gather the information and work towards a new facility. And I think part of that is their interaction with the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland. And as we know, this firm that we're going to be contracting with is out of Northern Virginia and has an excellent reputation through that academy and nationwide. So I would like to thank the chief and the firemen involved in this for doing their good work and for you all, because we do need to protect the residents of Summit. And plus, remember, we service, what, five surrounding communities, and we're protecting them also. So thank you very much.
Thank you, former council president, Dave Baumgarts, and thank you for your service also. Anybody else? Okay. Any further discussion by members of council? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Great. Okay. Moving on, buildings and grounds, we have a couple of them or a few of them. Councilwoman Fox for number one, please.
Thank you, Council President. The first Buildings and Grounds Resolution is six oh five four. This resolution amends the temporary arts placement process for the mayor's partnership for public art, and this allows for temporary art to be displayed for a period of twelve months rather than the existing nine-month period. It also allows for two special pieces to be displayed for longer than twelve months. And these changes are being made because the Summit Public Art Committee is a volunteer-run committee, and a lot of the work that they do is very time-consuming. First of all, they are fundraising to pay for the artwork, they have to pay honoraria to the artists. So there's less fundraising involved if the art can stay out a little bit longer. Secondly, the installation and deinstallation of the art sounds kind of easy, but it's actually a long process with agreements with the artists and working with the city about placement and the actual installation, and then later the deinstallation. So again, all of that work is very time-consuming. So it makes a lot of sense to extend the time period for that reason. And then also aesthetically, the art, the Public Art Committee has pointed out that a lot of this art is designed so it looks different in different seasons, and so a one-year period makes a lot of sense from that regard, too. So the city greatly appreciates the Summit Public Arts Committee's work, and I think this is something that we should definitely go forward with. I also wanted to note that although it's not in the resolution, the council committees will be restructured next year pursuant to an ordinance that we passed at the last meeting, actually November seventh. So the council committee responsible for approving the public art beginning next year will actually be probably Capitol Projects and Community Services. So we may need to adjust the resolution to deal with that. That being said, I enthusiastically move this resolution.
Thank you. Second. Great. Thank you. Okay. Any comments from members of council? No?
You know, I was just going to say, you know, I love this and the fact that we are in Arts Council, and I think that some people really have to sometimes get out of your neighborhood because you don't realize how many pieces of art are in the neighborhoods, whether it's, and they're not just centered in downtown. So those people on the north side, come on over to the Franklin area, those in Franklin, head over to the Brayton and et cetera, et cetera. So I just want everyone to really enjoy that, those pieces of art that we have scattered around town.
I just wanted to say that I know, I used to be a member of the Public Art Committee. I love the work they do, and I love the pieces. I also love the fact that they change frequently and that we get treated to new pieces all the time, and I think that's wonderful for the city. And I support this. If they think that they need the art pieces to be up for longer, I support that. But at the same time, I would love to find a way to have them keep flipping and keep getting more because I know they had a strong development season this year as well.
Mike?
Yeah. I sit on the, or as the liaison this year, so I think, Matt, you just have to give a lot more money, and we can have a lot more art. But it is nice to see the public support for public art. They did, I think, had a record fundraiser this year, and I think that's a direct reflection that a lot of people in the community do really value it and really like it. But for all the reasons that Councilwoman Fox said, there are some logistical reasons. You know, when you do the nine months, sometimes the removal comes up in January or February, and it's just impossible with snow and things like that. This is art, and it's difficult to remove. So there are a lot of reasons to do this. I know the committee is excited about it. They will continue, I know, to try and find new artists, and they have a lot of exciting projects going on, including, I know there's looking at a mural on some public buildings that are, I guess, technically not public art, or no, I'm sorry, on private buildings. So technically not public art, but it will certainly enhance our downtown, so I think stay tuned for that, it's going to be pretty spectacular.
Yes. Nora, please.
I agree completely. I think it's a great organization and a great group of volunteers. But also, some of the money that this year that they've raised, they're using for the student program. And that's that great piece that's on the, in front of the train station on Morris Broadway. I just think that that's great, and yes, turnover is terrific, but if we can help nurture art in this high school, I mean, I'm happy to see that happen, too.
Agree. You know, we had that mushroom for three years.
All I will add is, and something that has been, I think, I've noted previously, we actually, I think, had our planner topology come in, and they spoke about the, not only the aesthetic benefits of having public art, but also the monetary benefits of increasing value for homes and for businesses in having public art. And so therefore, there's a direct, I mean, you can find studies that show a correlation between the two, and it is very, it's not only a very well-run organization and bringing innovative art to Summit, but one that helps all of us in our property values. And so we shouldn't, we should be mindful of that. And there is, I think, some pieces that there, some large pieces for public spaces that we will discuss as well, so that'll be good. Any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, Buildings and Grounds, number two.
Thank you, Council President. Buildings and Grounds, number two, Resolution Six Zero Zero Five. Let's see. So this, sorry, little technical difficulty here. Okay. This, the City of Summit Affordable Housing Element and Fair Share Plan was adopted in February of twenty eighteen. As part of the plan, the city was required to establish an affirmative marketing plan as part of the existing affirmative marketing ordinance, which is in the city code. And this resolution approves the adoption of an affirmative marketing plan. And this marketing plan ensures that all affordable housing units created in Summit are marketed to very low, low, and moderate-income households in the Summit Housing region. The proposed plan, as drafted, has been reviewed and accepted by the court master. I move this resolution.
Second. Okay. Comments from members of council? Questions? Okay. Any comments or questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, number three, Marjorie.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Six Oh Six Three. This resolution authorizes an expenditure from the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the rehabilitation of existing affordable housing units. Summit Housing Authority has proposed to spend $400,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to replace deteriorated windows and staircases and baseboard heating systems for forty units in the Glenwood Place development. And the total cost of the project is $752,000. The Housing Authority has applied for other grants, including, I believe, a community block grant that we spoke about at the last council meeting, to fund the balance of the project. So to qualify for rehabilitation credits, the city must spend at least $10,000 per housing unit and include rehabilitation of a major system. Here, three major systems will be rehabilitated for that cost. This expenditure must be approved by the Affordable Housing Special Court Master as qualifying for rehabilitation credit. I move that we approve this resolution.
Second. Comments, Beth, please.
I just want to state that I am the council liaison to the Housing Authority, and this, these rehabilitations are very much needed and long overdue, especially the staircases at the Glenwood Apartments are in very bad shape, and this is a necessary expense. The windows and the heating is also going to be of great benefit and will be helpful in energy savings and in just the comfort and use of the units as well. So I would definitely support this resolution and think that we should move forward on this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mike?
Yeah. No, I completely agree. You know, the residents there, they, some of the conditions there are probably not what you'd expect, conditions in Summit, so this money needs to be spent. It does tell you, though, we, you know, we have a, there's a limited amount of money for affordable housing, and I know we're going to be speaking in two weeks to get the final ordinance in our hearing to get our co-obligations done. And there was a lot of debate about which we're going to spend on this and things like that, but it's important to note that we have affordable housing units in town already and that they need to be serviced as well. And there's only so much money to go around, and sometimes I think the debate about promoting theoretically more units can sometimes ignore the fact that we need to service people who live in our community already.
Further discussion? Any comments from members of the public or questions? Further discussion? I mean, all I'll add to that is we had the director of the Summit Housing Authority at the last council meeting speak about where they are. We had their chair as well, and I think it was very clear from our discussion that they recognize that, or we certainly impressed upon them the recognition, that these repairs need to be done both now in Glenwood, but then there's also repairs that need to be done at the Weaver Street Apartments and as well as in the senior housing. And just to make sure, because people are living there, we need to be their advocates in order to ensure that they are living in proper conditions. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on, number four, Marjorie.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Six Oh Nine Five. Pursuant to discussion in closed session, this resolution authorizes the city to enter into a one-year extension to a lease agreement with Family Promise for property at seventy-one Summit Avenue, which is the old fire station. The current lease agreement, or actually, it's the Old Town Hall. The current lease agreement will expire on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, and this was for, the current lease agreement was for a twenty-year term. And this Family Promise has requested that the city extend the current lease agreement for one year to allow time for their executive board to discuss potential options such as either another long-term lease or the purchase of the property. So in anticipation of the current lease expiration, the city, the lease extension would provide for the lease at an annual base rent of the prior lease. I move this resolution.
Second. Discussion by members of council? Oh, Mike?
Yeah, the only thing I would add to Councilwoman Fox's comments is that I'm just happy that we, the city's been able to negotiate and work very closely with Family Promise. We should all be proud of Family Promise. It's a charity that began in Summit, helps transitionally homeless people, and I think the good work that they do kind of makes sure that they are transitionally homeless because they do so much work to place them into housing and get people back up on their feet. They are now a national organization. I believe they are in forty-seven states is the number that I heard. So they are fairly big, and they call Summit their home, and I'm happy that the city can work with them to hopefully come to some sort of arrangement over the next year through this lease extension.
Great. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any comments from members of the public or questions? Yes, absolutely.
Very interesting, this process. Michael, thank you. My name is Richard Visens, fifteen Beekman Road. I'm a member of the board of Family Promise, and we truly appreciate being here and working with the city. The city's been very supportive to us, and we hope that this extension will enable us to come up with an enduring solution to where we're going to be headquartered for the long term. And to comment on your points, I don't know if anyone knows this, but of the homeless in the United States, thirty-five percent are children. And so our mission is to help those kids and their parents transition from homelessness back into a lasting, lasting place to stay. And so I'm very proud of the organization as has been advocated here. So thank you very much. I truly appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Any further discussion by members of council? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Finance and Personnel. We've got six resolutions. Councilwoman Little, you're up.
Thank you, Council President. The first finance resolution is to amend the resolution that we passed at the last two meetings ago, I believe, amend the two thousand eighteen municipal capital plan. And that is because the amounts included in the original resolution for the joint meeting included monies for the joint meeting sewer flood mitigation project, and that project is not going to be going forward according to the joint meeting. So this would just remove those monies from the previous resolution, and I ask that this resolution be moved for approval.
Second.
Okay. Further discuss, I mean, comments, questions from members of council?
I just had one question, and maybe Councilman Bowman can speak to it. When they came and they visited here, was that part of this
Mike?
I just had one question, and maybe Councilman Bowman can speak to it. When, when they came and they visited here, was that, that part of this, you know, this disaster plan that we don't want to have happen with flooding and stuff that's going to get delayed, is, is that what this, is that what this is? Or something different?
It is. The original idea was to have a 22-foot, and, and the federal FEMA is coming through and saying they only want it to be 17. And so we're, we're making it 15, or five feet shorter, and so we're still in negotiations on that right now. It's all about five feet.
Okay. It sounded like maybe we should invest in the extra five feet.
You know, unfortunately.
Given what the, the alternative is, you know.
It's very odd that FEMA would decide that you should have a shorter, smaller wall.
Well, you know.
Just so, just so background, like, let's help people, right, understand, maybe see if you can just give a little bit of background here.
Sure. So when Hurricane Sandy came through, and we were within inches of the, the joint meeting's plant being shut down because of flood waters that, that.
And this is the sewage plant?
That's the sewage plant, thank you. So over the years, they have come up with a plan that would be to acquire some land around the joint media, or the sewer plant, and to basically build a, a retaining wall to keep the water out and to, to pump any fluids or water that came in out of the plant and to make sure that our sewer continues to be flowing. Well, in this plan, FEMA and, was going to cover 85% of this construction project. And to Councilman McTernan's very observant question is, if we need it to be 22 feet, why don't we just go and build it and then say, "Thank you for these funds"? Unfortunately, it's one of these all or nothings. If we don't, or if we do build it at the 22 feet, disregarding the, the 17-foot that FEMA puts in, we don't get any funding at all. And that's a pretty big nut that we can't cover. Yeah.
Well, when, when Councilman Bowman and I were down at joint meeting about a month or so, two month and a half ago, at a tour, we'd spent a couple of hours, and the, the engineer and the head of the plant spent a lot of time with us, and frankly, they were not pleased at the reduction in size imposed upon by FEMA. But they were, their hands were tied, they were very frustrated, but their hands were tied, that they could not go forward. Certainly, it's a big nut if we had to cover it all, and then just think about the enormous expense for, you know, other cities like Elizabeth, if they had to cover the whole thing. So it's, and I, we both said, we both had, we said, "Well, is this, are you serious? I mean, is this, are we building something that's going to be inadequate to start with"? And they said they, you know, there's, FEMA did not believe so.
Yeah, I'd just add to that, is it's, it's the difference between a 500-year storm and a 100-year storm. And as we've seen, these 100-year storms are becoming much more frequent than, than once every 100 years. We've had something like 12 in the last 25 years or something to that effect. So I'm sure we will be, I know we will be going back to the negotiating table.
Okay. Interesting. Any other questions, comments from members of council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Finance and Personnel, number two, Councilwoman Little.
Finance, thank you, Council President. Finance, Resolution Number Two is to authorize annual salaries for the city employees. There are no significant changes, it just authorizes the steps and annivatory increases that are effective on January 1st. I move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Comments and questions from members of council? Comments and questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance and Personnel, number three, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you. Finance, Resolution Number Three is to authorize transfer of appropriations in the operating budget, as we've discussed at the last council meeting and as we discussed last November and December. These are changes that are made to move funds that have, move, in an accounting manner, to move funds that have surpluses to funds that have deficits. So this is, we had more fire department overtime, so we're reappointing some of the funds. That was because we changed the structure of the fire department, I'm going to say this, I want to say this correctly, the staffing in order to, and that was to, instead of hiring a new fire staff, and there were some additional overtime costs of, that were associated with that, but certainly a cost-saving over hiring new personnel. So this is an accounting measure to transfer appropriations in the operating budget, and I ask that this be moved for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any comments and questions from members of council?
I just wanted to say that, to that, I know that Chief Evers and the Fire Department have been working on a plan, with City Administrator Rogers, working on a plan to mitigate those overtime costs even more for 2019 by different coverages and working with different cities as well, and the way that they backfill emergencies. So I think that they've done a good job at managing it, and I think it'll get even better in the year to come.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Any comments and questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance and Personnel, number four, please.
Thank you, Council President. Finance, Resolution Number Four is to authorize execution of a cooperative pricing membership agreement with Hunterdon County Educational Services Commission. These are pretty much win-win agreements for the city, and it gives us access to bulk purchasing and lower prices for goods and services that they provide. So I enthusiastically move this for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any comments and questions from members of council? Comments, questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Finance and Personnel, five?
Finance, Resolution Number Five is to reappoint Juliette Rogero as our tax collector. She is an excellent tax collector, and I enthusiastically move this for approval.
Second.
Any comments and questions from members of council? I will, you know, earlier this year, I think we had the issue of a lot of folks wanting to prepay their taxes because of the change in the tax law. And my recollection, if it serves me right, is our tax collector and our tax collection office had a lot of kudos from the public of how well they handled the process, which was very, you know, challenging, because so many people came in so quickly to deal with it, but they did it in an efficient manner, and they did it with a courteous manner, and that's the kind of service that I think people have a right to expect, and, and we should, we should also thank people who work extra, do that, the type of service that's right. Any comments and questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Number six, please.
Thank you. Final finance resolution is number six, and that is to reappoint Marge Gerber as the City Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer. And anyone who has attended meetings and listened to me speak on any kind of financial accounting matter has heard me sing Marge's praises and talk about what a wonderful job she does and what, and that her department does. So I even more enthusiastically ask that the council approve this resolution. Thank you.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Any comments and questions from members of council? I think we all agree, we enthusiastically support Marge. Any comments in my, from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're moving on to Works. Councilwoman Bowman, number one, Works, please.
Thank you, Council President. Works Resolution Number One, Number 6086, is the resolution authorizing a change order for the, final change order for the Lennox Witchridge Road Improvement Project for $19,864.07. This project, first off, came out great. It was originally awarded at $906,531, and it's completed at 9,000, 900,226,395. So basically, we're, we're increasing it by 2.2%, so it's a small increase. Historically, we've been lucky, most of our change orders have been decreases. This is unusual that we are saying we're going, we're going up. This project was necessary and extensive and installed storm stewers, sidewalk repairs, plus the standard milling and paving. While it came in under, over budget, the city worked with our contractor to control costs. For example, one of the savings was that we saved on some sewer pipes, and we didn't require a fire hydrant to be moved, so I'm sure some of the dogs in the neighborhood are happy about that. In reviewing the final adjustments, the game changer really was the New Jersey Fuel Index. So I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Comments, questions from members of council? Comments, questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Works number two, please.
Okay, Works Number Two, Resolution 6050, is an authorization of execution of a shared service agreement that we have with New Providence, basically for the wastewater operations and maintenance license for $138,000 a year. In order to operate our sewer collection system, Summit is required to have a C3 license. We have, over the last seven years, we have been contracted with New Providence to have this covered. This allows for daily inspection plus hourly rates for call-out services. This agreement will run us through 12/31/20. Just so you know, this is a seven days a week, 24 hours a day project, or position, so we are saving money in that, you know, it is a, we're not hiring anyone, we're not covering those expenses, but it is, it is 24/7. So I move we accept this resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any comments and questions from members of council? You know, this is one of those shared services, people always talk about how can you share services and reduce costs? This is one of those mechanisms, extending it for two years in order to, to continue to share services with New Providence. Any comments and questions from members of the public? Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number three, Number 6062, is an authorization of execution of the Greening Union County Grant Agreement for the spring 2019 tree supply and installment. This is a matching grant that we have with Union County with a maximum of $10,800. So basically, what we're doing is we're going to be planting seven trees, or 70 trees in 2019. The grant requires that after the trees have been planted, they need to be maintained for one year. Having been a landscaper in college, I know the importance of that first year's TLC, it's, properly, proper water and protection allows these trees a greater chance to become acclimated and therefore healthier trees. This will further enhance Summit's status as a tree city. I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Comments? Out of the eight?
Surprise. What kind of trees are we getting this year?
Oh, we have, you, don't make me go through.
There's a list, I have a list in your package.
There are, there are seven of them, and they are, they're scientific titles.
I read the packet. What are the most, what are the most of them?
Ten, there's ten of each, there's seven.
Yeah.
We're not going to, you're not going to go through the list. You're not, no, no, no.
The list doesn't.
He can give us a list.
Right, you, I'm not well for you, Council President.
Maple. The plain names, the plain English names.
Yeah, that's just what I want to know.
There are some zelkova's, there are some maples, there will be no ashes, I can assure you of that. And some oaks, too.
Oaks, great.
Okay. Everybody loves oaks.
Wonderful.
And there is also, and those are your larger trees with canopies, and then in areas where there are wires, we plant compact trees, so there may be some cherries included in there, and some flowering trees, dogwoods as well.
Excellent. Thank you. I actually, this is my favorite grant of the whole year, and I'm serious in wanting to know, I'm not doing it just to be our time.
You're just kidding, yes.
Okay.
But they are all improved by our John Lunt's.
Hold on, hold on, Nora Haltz has a question now.
Through you.
Yes.
How do you determine where to plant the trees?
So we do have an inventory of our trees from years ago, and where we've removed trees. So we have prospective planting locations through our inventory, but also when we remove a tree, we always ask the resident if they would like another tree back in the city right of way. So we keep a list of any trees that are removed, and they, that, that will become the precedent first, is where we remove trees, then we plant trees. But we do have an inventory of tree locations that was completed many years ago by some college interns, so we go to that list if we need them. But we also hope that residents will contact us, and occasionally they do, we get maybe five or six locations a year, that a resident may contact us and request a tree planted in the right of way, and that'll be placed on that list as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, if we remember from the beginning of this year, we had, I think, Members of the Environmental Commission come in and speak to us about the loss of our tree canopy in part because of all the recent storms that we've had. We also had residents come from Wallace talking about storm, water, trees help to take some of that storm water out instead of having them go into our sewer system. You'll see a constant theme of mine, that a lot of what we do has real impact on dollars and cents for, for residents. With the reduction in having water being taken out instead of going into our storm sewer, sewer system helps to keep that infrastructure going longer with less repairs, and that helps the bottom line again. One of the things, Paul, and following up the mayor's question, I think maybe what we want to do is, you know, have an intern, we have interns during the summertime, look at that inventory, because I think we should, we really need to think of expanding maybe where that right of way, where we're planting trees, because we have really lost a lot of tree cover in the last few years, and we need to replenish some of that. So, but with that, I'll open it for comments from the public? Further discussion by members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. General Services, Councilman Ogden.
Oh, closing up the night. All right, here we go. This resolution is to authorize the execution of the Union County Kids Recreation Trust Fund 2018 Grant Agreement in the amount of $55,000. This has been awarded to us, and so I'm very excited that it's going to go to the Summit Senior Bachi Park Fitness Area and Play Trail. We went out for this back in July and have been notified, notified of the award of the $55,000 for the installation of the Bachi Court first, and then the play trail adjacent to the community center. So I excitedly move this resolution.
And I second.
Great. Any comments and questions from members of, Mike?
It's nice to see seniors being, getting grants from the kids trust fund.
Yes.
It tells you, it's all about what's up here.
It's the kid at heart.
Exactly right. It's all of state of mind, so I'm hap, I'm happy that they're getting some, some money from it.
Considering the fact that we're all getting older, I think we want to just believe in that theory. Nora, please.
I just want to make a quick comment. This morning, I meant to mention earlier, I was at the Old Guard, at the 4,000th meeting of the Old Guard. They meet weekly, their first meeting was December 2nd, 1930. So they're 88 years plus two days. And one of the gentlemen came up to me before we got going with the session to say, "Do we have that money for the Bachi Court yet"? So I can, I have his name, I can now go let him know that in fact it's here. But yeah, those guys, they meet, there are 140 men there today, and they meet every week, and it's a great organization, but the 4,000th meeting.
Wow. Okay. Any other comments, questions from members of council? Any comments and questions from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
But before moving on to the consent agenda, the mayor has a resolution that she would like to speak about, and then I think Councilwoman Ogden will introduce it, and I can go ahead and second it, because I think we need two council members to, so you can speak to it, but, but you have to introduce it, Mary. Okay?
I, I learned of this, many of you have heard about the Union County has trying to improve its, its finances. The Union County Board of Freeholders approved the, a shared services agreement with the Essex County Board of Freeholders. They also have unanimously approved the agreement. It would be to close the Union County Juvenile Detention Center, which currently houses 10 juveniles, and would, those, those juveniles would be housed and taken care of by the Essex County, and Union County would pay a certain fee to them. The net savings to Union County is $9 million a year, which is a lot, enormous amount of money. So this is just, I would like us to consider a, a resolution, and so it's been approved by both of the county freeholder boards. They have to then get it approved at the Gov., through the Attorney General's Office and the JCC, which is a juvenile correction commission, and it's just sitting up there. So, or down there. This is just a resolution to encourage the, the state to take action on what both counties have already approved.
Thank you. Mary, would you like to introduce?
Okay, so I would like to move a resolution that the state, encourage the state for the combined effort of closing the Union County and Essex County Detention Centers.
Merging, merging, excuse me.
Merging them.
Okay. Merging. Okay. Just so it's clear, the resolution is, we would encourage the state to move forward with the merger of the Union County and Essex County Juvenile Detention Center, as had been approved by those respective counties. That's the resolution. And so I'll second that. Okay? Any questions, comments?
Just a procedural one from what the counties, so they can't do this on their own, the state has to approve this? Is that what?
Yes. And I was at a shared services symposium at Drew University last week, and Michael was with me. And they, the question came up from the Essex County Deputy Manager, and he said, and the two gentlemen who are the shared services czars, Jordan Glatt and Nick Platt were there, and members of the local government services office. And he said, "How come it's taking so long"? And there were other people in the audience who were, in their counties, they had also merged, or gotten rid of one detention center and merged into the other. And they just said, "It takes a lot of time, the state is just very slow". But so you, yes, you have to have the approval of the state. But it's been brought to the attention of the shared services folks and local government services, was brought to their attention last week. It's just trying to put pressure on them. And there's no reason not to. It's happened in other counties. But again, it has to go through this procedure at the state.
Yeah, no, I would support the resolution. I would hope the county continues to look at what seems like relatively low-hanging fruit. Now, this, I'm shocked that this hasn't happened, whatever, 20, 20 years ago, but.
Well, part of it is that some of this has been taken over, I guess some of the officers were, let me back up, because of the bail reform in the state of New Jersey, several of the officers who would also be working in the juvenile office, they don't need to work anymore, because so many fewer people are being held on bail, because they're released on the Roman cognizance with various, you know, criteria that the judge can allow. So it's decreasing, it's decreasing the amount of workforce that's required, and then that's just forcing them to look at everything.
Well, like I said, that's great, that this is happening. You know, I know that they always talk about Union County having the only sheriff and police department in of any county in the state, so hopefully they can get to that. And then hopefully we can get our taxes reduced a little bit as well. We'll see that.
Every little bit helps.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I presume the reason, well, I'm, so one second. So I presume the reason we're doing a resolution is that by having us formidably support this, this will help the counties push that in?
Correct, correct. Any pressure that we can give them is helpful. And as I said, I've reached out to the former mayor, Glatt, and said, "This is something that should be easily approved."
What form does our encouragement take? Is it a letter?
It's a resolution. I can, I have it, and we've had a tough time getting it. We've been a little crazy this week. So I can read it. Would you like me to read it?
I don't feel it's necessary to read it, but who does it, unless you want to?
It goes to the Attorney General's Office.
Oh, to the, so that's who it is, the Attorney General?
Right, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Any questions and comments from members of the public? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. We're at the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Welcome. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Council members, comments and new business, anyone? Okay, good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We are adjourned.